Online and we have just doing some business here. We're gonna. Mem- Commissioner Member Reed is offering to do the pledge today, so we appreciate that. Okay, so getting started for our work session. Thank you everyone for coming a little early. That'll make it a little easier when we. Um, we have a smaller agenda, but this will give us a chance to kind of talk about some business items that Amy's been working on and. So I'm gonna turn the time over to you, Amy.
Right, I'm gonna turn the time over to Garth, cuz he's gonna walk through some things.
Okay, perfect. And just for the record, Garth Day is contracted for through the city to help Amy with some of the. Um, as she's been assigned the new, a new role to interim.
The planner, the interim planner stuff.
So Garth Day is, is filling that role and so we'll like turn the tone over to Garth and tell us.
Well, thank you.
Little update.
Uh, the, the purpose for tonight's work session is just to go through, um, maybe familiarize your, you with some of the procedural things that, that we've been working on. Uh, with a couple of goals in mind. Ultimately, you'll have a new planner and a new community development director. And, um, we'd like to kind of leave them with a better process to make everything more efficient. So I, I provided a little, a couple of little sheets for you, uh, up here. The top one you'll recognize is your typical planning staff memo. I included that because that's what you're, you're familiar with seeing. The second document, which is page three. It is a little bit of a new document and you probably won't get to see that, um, because that's our staff evaluation of projects. And the reason that that's important is because the planning commission, I, I believe, needs to have. Faith that the planning staff has reviewed stuff. So when Robin and I and Amy have, have worked on a little bit of a new process for. Taking in applications and some timing for that. So two weeks before the meeting, we end the application process. So on the Tuesday, before the Wednesday, which is two weeks before your meeting, end of business, uh, all applications have to be in before that meeting. The next morning, which is Wednesday, which is actually two weeks before, we'll have a preliminary review of all the applications that came in. We will send them out, um, as appropriate to each, uh, department or reviewing agency. Uh, to, to get comments and that's this document right here. And it's kind of a working document that we will use as. I would say it's a living document because we'll make comments, we'll ask for other people to make comments. And then we'll give that to the petitioner so that they can address the comments as necessary. And then ultimately, when the, when the item is, is appropriate and ready to be put on the agenda and all the items have been completed or mostly completed. Uh, you'll see the planning, um, staff memo. So our goal is to have. Every item that's on the planning commission will be covered by a planning staff memo. And if there's other memos that need to be to engineering or any other concerns, we will include those. However, the, the planning staff should be reviewing every single item. And that's just it. And I, and I share that with you just so that you'll, you'll, you'll know that we were trying to get rid of conditions. Uh, one, one of the things that, that I think is very frustrating to most communities that I've worked in is when you're approving projects with conditions. Those conditions sometimes can't be met or petitioners get frustrated because they feel like they're unreasonable and they're trying to move forward. So our goal is to try to narrow that down and not have as many approvals with conditions. Now, that's not to say that'll never happen because some of them aren't pretty minor and, and just need to happen, but for the most part, things like. Um, an example of a petition you had before you recently that didn't have the adequate access and they were asking for approval with that as a condition. That's probably not a good condition to, to put on there cuz they may or may not get that. And if they can't get it to our standard, then they're gonna try to talk us down to something else. So again, the goal of the planning staff, uh, is to try to minimize that as much as possible. The other item that I, I bring to your attention is I've been re- reviewing your policies and procedures. Um, which, which is wonderful that you have. The city council and, and the planning commission apparently has worked together to have a procedure for your order of business. One little item, and it sounds like it's not a big deal. It sounds like it's a minor thing, but, um, i- in my experience. It can make your meeting go a whole lot smoother. And that's the very last copy that you see. Item, uh, um. V is five, right? So the order of decorum, items two and three. So the way it works currently is your chair introduces the item on the agenda and then turns the time over to the applicant to make a presentation. After that, the staff makes a staff presentation. In my opinion, and my recommendation is that you swap that. So that every item is first presented by the staff. They go over what it is. And I think what would happen with that, again, sounds like it may be a, a difference without distinction, but I, I think that you'd see an immediate difference. A lot of the questions that you may have will already have been covered. And, and maybe the applicant doesn't understand or doesn't. You know, it doesn't kind of realize it. So if you let the, the staff frame. Uh, the discussion on the front end and go over the memo, most of the questions will probably be answered. It'll, I think you'll, you would notice an immediate difference in, uh, the efficiency of your meeting. But that's a, I, I think that's something that the city council probably would have to act on to change your procedures, but.
And I think we've sometimes done that, but just not consistently.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
At city council, that's what happens, that, um, somebody will come in, the, you know, but the, um, like the mayor will recognize. One of the staff to do, why don't you tell us what's going on? They talk and then they ask, does anybody have any, you know, questions of the, the applicant? Um, with this, being able to change it, I mean, really, we just need to put it on the, you know, put it on your agenda. Have you guys vote on whether or not you're okay with the change? And then it goes up to the city council for them to approve it.
That makes sense.
And, and really, again, you, city council does it this way all the time and it does. I think make it a lot more efficient that way cuz it just, um.
I agree.
Kind of frames the, here's all the stuff that they've provided, here's all the stuff they haven't provided, um. And then they, then you guys could ask any questions you, you want of the applicant.
Uh, it, it also would be smoother for the applicant because I, I think that they would realize that the questions that they have are probably addressed in some manner as well.
And same with, uh, anybody in attendance that's here, maybe wanting to attend to get more information or to participate in the public hearing. A lot of those, uh, questions might be addressed.
Hopefully upfront.
Yeah, I think so too. Especially if it's a heated issue, maybe kind of addressing some of the potential conflicts, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And as we were talking about this earlier with this, as a staff with, with Robin as well. This, this procedure, this should be the order of business for everything you do, even in a public hearing. When you, when you open a public hearing, you should allow the staff to kind of frame the issue for you. And, and let them go over the, the reviews and everything that it, that it is. Uh, and then you open the public hearing so that the public actually can comment on the actual item. Cuz sometimes, I mean, I haven't been familiar with the public hearing here, but sometimes the public gets a little off. On, on things that they, they don't understand what quite, what the deal, you know, what, what the application is. So anyway, um, with that, that's, that's really, I just wanted to, to brief you on that so that you'll understand how we're reviewing projects. Uh, at least in the interim till you get a planner and hopefully, uh, as we identify a planner and you, you get one on board, then they'll have some framework to, to work in.
I think that's good. Thank you.
If you have any questions or any comments or anything that we could do better, more than happy to.
I'm good at stupid questions. Where is this located?
Where is?
I've never seen this doc.
Policies and procedures?
Yeah.
I got it from the attorney.
I'm always thinking with our new members.
Possibly get this document?
Um, yes.
Since I've been here a year and a half and have never seen it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we updated it, I thought, like, last year sometime. Didn't we go through and update it? But you may know.
But we did only just a minor change. What the, what it was, was the, um.
There was something with our length of meeting.
What's the date on the, on the resolution?
Yeah, cuz you were here for that, right?
Mm-hmm, I was. Is it in March?
Uh, it's September of twenty-three.
Oh, yeah. So if you go and look at, uh, the city council, um, that's where I had to find it cuz I. I thought that it was posted someplace on our, um, website and. I mean, Robin, do, do you know if it's posted somewhere on the website with policies and procedures? So, um.
May- maybe what would be helpful is if we just took that section out for the planning commission, kind of wrote, wrote it down and just set it aside so that you would. You could see the actual procedures for what you do cuz it is a large document and there's a whole bunch of procedures involved. So maybe if we just kind of cut that part out and pasted it into a document for you.
Yeah, maybe just extract it for us. I don't know.
And maybe each year annually, email it out, like at the first, in January each year, just, and if that's where we get new members emailing it to them. And it's a good reminder for all of us cuz there was information about absenteeism, how many, um, absences and things like that, so I think.
Yeah, the September twenty-twenty-three amendment was that it added that, um, the work sessions, you couldn't be absent from more than three regular, you know. Meetings or work sessions, so it was both, but with a, um, without being excused by the chair. So, um, I can get the official document, um.
Just the, I don't know.
Well, do you want, do you want the resolution and?
Sure.
The exhibit?
Yeah, I'll take whatever you got, as long as it's not yay thick.
Well, I mean, it's, it's this thick.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take that.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Is this part of thirty-two oh-two? Planning commission ordinance?
It might be.
Or is it?
Hold on.
Because I've got the planning commission ordinance, but. You said this is a procedure, not an ordinance.
It may hit. Hold please. Let me look at.
Apparently, this isn't a dumb question.
So what you have is you'll typically have a, an ordinance that establishes the planning commission with, basically, it's consistent with the state law. And typically, your procedures would be done by a resolution, how you want to operate. Uh, the state law doesn't tell you how to operate. It just tells you kind of general parameters, when you hold public hearings and not. But this resolution, and I apologize, Amy, it actually is in, uh, April of twenty-twenty-three. Um, but that will tell you how you operate. Um, how you, how you conduct your business, how, what, what decorum is and so forth, so. Um, you, I don't know why, we could probably clip something out and just make a, a handout. And it'd also be nice to have a welcome aboard package for new members as they come onboard to share with them.
Well, I know that, um, Alaka did, um, do that. I don't think that she added this, this in there cuz I know that Robin had to. Didn't she have to send them, everybody a certain?
Yeah, there was, I think, five or six documents that Robin sent out, but this wasn't part of it, so.
Yeah, cuz I mean, we're not following it verbatim, like, A, let's see, four, and then AF. It says, Chair asks commissioners if there's any ex parte communications. Like, we, I don't ask that. I just assume that, um, people will come forward if there's anything on the agenda, that they might have a conflict of interest. Anyway, so I'm just saying, hmm, probably not following it exactly if that's something that needs to be asked at every meeting. Do you think it does?
Well, I think that, that it also says if, if the chair doesn't ask, then the members have the obligation to say.
Okay, if chair fails to ask, okay, that's true at the end of the sentence.
So thirty-two point zero-two is not these policies and procedures. Thirty-two point oh-two is just how the planning commission is set up and, um, how many members, um, that, that sort of thing. So that's what thirty-two oh-two is.
Okay, and I did find, I just found this policies and procedures. It was sent out to, uh, at least, um, those brand new, um. Planning commission members who, we just started. Seems like a couple of months ago, I guess it was January. So I know Dustin and I got this, but I don't know if anybody else has it. Along those lines, um, you know, as long as we're in a more of an informal planning session, um. Sometimes when I try and go to the, the West Haven website and look up different ordinances. I can't find things. And then I'll call and ask, like, I'd, I'd call Alaka and say, I can't find this ordinance. It should send me a link. And so she'd send me a link to stuff that was ordinances of the city, but it's not the same set of ordinances. That I could find by looking up, you know, westhaven.gov or whatever the, the website is. So there's some kind of disconnect there, and I don't know what it is. It's probably user error, but.
So, okay, let's, a couple of things, so.
It's not just you.
Okay.
It's not what?
I said, it's not just him. I find on my phone. I can't do things on my phone. I can do things on my laptop that I can't get to on my phone. Have you guys noticed that?
Yeah, so you can't get to American Legal on your phone?
Um, just the, it's like. Certain char- things that you kind of try to pull up, they're not there.
Yeah, the West Haven, um, the West Haven website is not mobile user friendly.
Right.
The West Haven website. We're not talking about the, the code.
But to get the link to the code.
Oh.
You can't get there on the mobile site. So if you're trying to search anything on your phone, you're never gonna find it. But if you are using a, you know, desktop or something, you'll be able to find it. So if you don't, if you don't know that the code is where it's at, you may never find it.
So what our publishing, um, our, our code publisher is, is American Legal Publishing. So if you, um, if you search by. In fact, I'm going to.
Somewhere on the website, I followed a link that said that it was to the ordinances, but it wasn't everything that you're talking about.
So if you put into, you know, the search engine, American Legal Publishing, um, it'll come up. And it'll have a bunch of different things. It'll say code library. If you click onto code library, then it has a list of like all the states that they have. And then you click on Utah, and then you go down the list of all the different, um, cities. And you can click on West Haven and it gets you to our code that way. So in case you can't get to our code through the, you're on your phone, you can't get to it through the, um. The city, um, website, it's American Legal Publishing.
Okay, but shouldn't that be a little easier for your average citizen to locate? If they don't know it's American Legal Publishing?
The thing is.
And I'm not saying it's your fault, but.
They're, they're in the middle of updating our city, um, website.
Okay.
And they've been doing that, they've been working on that for about a year now as to trying to get, um. And having, you know, those buttons be more accessible as to what the code is and stuff, so.
And having those codes centralize all that work that you guys did and with Sherry is a huge improvement.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that, that is much better.
There just needs to be a little more synergy with that and the website, but it's, it's improved, but we still have a little ways to go.
So, well, let's see if I can get to it from here.
So the link, the, when I, I can't find it right now, but when I find a link on the westhavencity.com website. And it takes me to ordinances, that's not the real ordinances.
Well.
It, it is.
It is.
It is. If, if, it's just, if you're doing the search, when you do the search, it's gonna take you to an old site. If you go to ordinances under public records. You'll get to the ordinance page.
As long as you know the look under, yeah.
Yeah, but if you just search, you're gonna go to stuff that doesn't exist, but if you go through the website itself.
Yeah, so are you looking at, cuz I'm looking at the website and there's these three buttons. That say, if you get out of Techs My Gov, there's agendas and minutes, online utility payments, and city code.
So, so you gotta go to city recorder, public, public records, ordinances.
Go to the, go to the home screen. Okay, now go down.
Oh, I've got a.
There you are, right there. That button.
Okay, so I, that's where I've gone before, and then it's got these things over here.
Uh-huh.
But sometimes.
What button are you hitting?
And then they're codified into these numbers.
Right, right. But some, sometimes I've looked here and I, okay, so this is where I found it before. But I won't be able to find some of the stuff that Alec has talked about. And then I'll, I'll email her and she'll send me a link to something that is not here.
That's not here?
Yeah.
Okay. Unfortunately, I cannot, um, I can neither confirm nor deny what Alaka may or may not have sent you. All I can do is like move forward.
Thank you for the legalese on that one.
Well, but, but once I, are, are these supposed to be the right ones?
Yes, this is the right one. This is the right.
Okay.
So when we pass an ordinance, what happens is they take, um, Emily, um, sends that, a copy of that ordinance to American Legal Publishing. They then codify it into these different titles, different chapters. For whatever, and lots of times it's, we're not necessarily creating a new section of the code. Most of the time, we're just amending one of our sections of the code. But that's what happens and then you have this. Back about three years ago, we didn't have our, so the. Paper ordinances were a different numbering system than the online numbering system. We now have, it's all one, and that's where we're at with this.
Okay, so if I have a, a specific example in the future, I'll drill down on that specific example to find it out. Okay.
Well, and.
Thank you.
The reason, and American Legal is really great because you can actually search for terms in, in this, um. In our code now. And so like it has up at the very top, it says, search, login, select language, resources. You go to that search button and you can actually, you know, say you wanna see sign ordinance or parking. Or you put it in there and it'll pull up our sections of the code. It will also pull up other, um, towns, cities, um, sections too. Which is helpful when you're trying to figure out, all right, what do we wanna do? Do we wanna change something? Do we wanna?
Can I show you something?
Okay.
Woohoo, no. All right, so on, on the mobile site, so you got.
The mobile city site?
Yep, mobile city site. Not, not, American Legal, I think, is awesome. Like, once you get there, everything's fantastic. It, it has always been the getting there that has been like the, the chore.
It's problematic.
Mm-hmm. But on the city site, all that pulls up is the agendas and minutes without any direction that this actually slides to the right. There's no arrows left and right, so you have no idea.
That it'll do it?
That it will do it, or that the city code is three screens over because there's no arrows that that is gonna switch and it doesn't automatically like, you know how, like. She just showed it to me. That's the first time. So that's one of, I don't know if you can pass that on. That's one of the issues that. Mm-hmm, yeah, those banners that kind of go. So they're, they're, I don't know if you can pass that on.
And they, I already, um, can tell you that that is one of the things they're looking at, may, being able to make it, um, user friendly across all the platforms.
And I think by hap- or by other websites, they go up to the little three lines up in the top for a. For drop-down carrots to look for different directory. So I thought.
Yeah.
Let's see, what's the time lag between us?
Well, because that's been it.
The city council passing an ordinance and then it goes to American Legal and then it shows up on.
Um, so there's a couple of different things. One is the online version, and then we do still have a paper version. Um. The paper version is updated like once a quarter, I think. Um, and Emily will pass, you know, cuz only certain people have like the big paper. I believe it's within a week that they update the, you have to ask Emily about it, but it's actually pretty, um.
More or less, that's, that's good.
Yeah, cuz it gets sent out to them, I think, within a week or so of us passing it so that it gets updated. But I don't know how fast they update it. I know they don't send us out the paper version until. But we'd have to ask. I, I knew at one point when we first did it, they gave us the timelines as to what. But I can't remember that, so.
Just looking for ballpark, it was just a question. No big deal.
So, any other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
So another thing that we got when we, um, at least, um, Dustin and I got when we became new planning commission members is a. A digital copy of the general plan, or not the general plan, the general plan map. Well, we got the general plan too. But, you know, I pulled the whole general plan map up on this thing and it's like worthless cuz I can't blow it up. Is there any way that we could get like? A, a big enough size paper copy of the general plan map that we could take at home and as we're looking at these, uh. Staff, uh, reports that we could say, oh, yeah, this is where it is and, and be able to get a feel for it?
Well, how big are we talking?
Well, you remember when we were working.
You wanna see how thick these are?
Mine are thicker, so.
When we were working on the general plan, we were laying out these maps. And they were very helpful. We could work with those. And I think that's probably the size he's talking about.
I think probably, I mean, we had some in a work session here.
Right.
And I was hoping to just be able to take one home at the end of the work session, but.
Just for, you know, home decor, thinking that.
Some of us actually do read and study these.
I, I know, I'm just teasing you. Um, we actually have a, um, we have a, a big enough printer that we could see about, um. You know, printing out one of those. Um, just, is there anybody else who wants one besides?
I wouldn't mind one, just a.
I would like one as well, so.
It's hard to look at one on a, I don't know, there, it's just a hard document to kind of.
So does everybody want one or nobody, or?
Is there one online and is it accurate?
Um, there is one online and it is accurate.
Okay, I don't need one.
I, I tend to look at the ones online because I can zoom in to different places.
Maybe just send it, maybe send out, we'll, we'll work on the policies and procedures and maybe send that one out and then we can.
Send what out?
The general plan?
But we're talking about the paper copy? Cuz the general plan is online.
Okay.
The general plan map is online. But it's whether or not you want the paper copy.
See, and here's, here's the thing. So this is, you know.
Also zoom in.
Yeah, but even still on this screen.
I think part of the problem that I have had and along those lines, when you zoom in on an area. Then you don't have the index or the, the coloration and the descriptions of all those things. Then you gotta move over and then come back.
I've had that problem.
Yeah, it, I think it would be easier.
So how many paper copies are we talking here?
I actually already have one, so.
So Jeff has his, Russell, you want yours, right?
Yes.
Becky, you want one?
She would like one.
This is George. I'd like one also.
So there's three. And Andrew?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, just something I could put on the kitchen table or something, you know, I don't, I don't wanna make it a wall mural, but.
Look, I don't know what you wanna do with it, but, all right, so three? It sounds like we got three. All right, well, now it's six oh-two, so.
We don't know if Dustin wants one or not, but I guess he could ask.
When he sees you guys, as he may be envious and he may ask then, and we'll deal with it then.
Well, he should have been here tonight.
There you go.
Okay, let's get ready to switch over.
That's me.
You want to. Let's end our work session and, um, we'll switch over to our, uh, regular planning commission meeting. Do we need to switch anything online or is it just continuous, continuous, I guess? Okay. With that being said, we're done with our work session. I'd like to welcome everyone to our planning commission meeting, West Haven. Um, we'll go ahead and get started with our opening ceremonies. Um, we'll have a pledge of allegiance directed by Commissioner, Commissioner Reed. And then a prayer and moment of silence by Commissioner Rena.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather today as a city and as a council and to discuss. The needs of our city. We ask that we might be edified by one another and be able to determine the best decisions for our city and. For the residents that live here as well. And this we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. All right, thank you. All right, moving along to agenda item number three, action on city council. Amy, do you have anything to report?
No, because they didn't have a city council meeting last week because of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, um, conference.
Very good. And, alright, moving along to agenda item number four. Discussion and action on the parking ordinance to consider an amendment to the parking regulations, chapter 71 ordinance. Um, I believe Dan is gonna speak to us on that topic. Oh, we didn't do the minutes, though. We don't have them. Okay. We don't have the minutes, so I just.
On vacation.
Okay, that's fine. We will approve them at the next meeting. That would be great. Okay. And I just got back into the country, so I didn't, anyway, if there was them, so, I was leading that up to.
Well, that's what I'm here for.
It's a Commissioner Reed, I was depending on my other resources, so, okay, sorry about the little sidestep there. I felt like we were missing something. Okay, Dan, go ahead and give us an update.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, just to follow up to something we discussed last month in regards to the parking ordinance. You asked me to go meet with the city council to get their thoughts and feelings about one particular part of this as it relates to trailers on the city street. Um, and so you have before you what the, um, result of that discussion was. And so just to briefly go over it, um, they, they did a, um, they did approve the wording, putting the wording into the ordinance in regards to perpendicular and angular parking. Um, so we can eliminate some of the frustrations we have in the city, but also note in that same, part F, that talks about directional parking, something that we've had an issue with before, and it addresses that. And so, and if you park parallel on the road, you have to park in the direction of traffic flow. You can't park opposite. So, that's covered in that same change. Obviously, they were, um, in agreeance with the removing 48 hours from a vehicle on sale, for sale on, uh, city street. And then when it came to the trailers and recreational vehicle type, recreational type vehicle, um, prohibited parking, they agreed with the resident that, um, had the comment about, you know, sometimes you bring home a boat, or you bring home a flatbed with, you know, an ATV or something, you just haven't got time to get to it. And it'd be nice to have 24 hours to also unload that trailer. And they agreed with that. And so the changes that you see before you is putting in that inclusive language that, um, allows them to keep any type of trailer for the purpose of loading or unloading, um, for up to, up to 24 hours. No more than 24 hours. One small change, Commissioner Reed had brought to my attention, just to make sure that we are clear. We're about halfway down where it talks about any boat on an unattached trailer. We want that to say any boat slash watercraft, because that would have to include any type of watercraft, jet skis, portable, anything. So, we'll want to add that additional language in there that says any boat slash watercraft on an unattached trailer.
If I could make another suggestion, right above it in 7104, it talks about vehicles for sale, trailer or boat. I would probably put watercraft in there.
Okay.
Well, Dan, thank you.
Yep.
Could I ask a little bit more about paragraph F? So, the city council has indicated that they want this?
On the?
On the non-parallel, no parallel parking?
Well, the, the perpendicular and angular parking is restricted by state code. And if the city wanted to allow it, then they'd have to pass their own code that said it's permitted. In, in the instance that we have where we feel like we need to make sure that we are clear on what's not allowed, we wanted to add this in there, so that if any, if it came into question, it wouldn't be the question of, well, if it doesn't say I can't, then I can. So we're putting the verbiage into the ordinance, so it's clear. It is not allowed. It's prohibited. Now, understand, that's for any curb parking. If there's a dedicated perpendicular parking lot, that doesn't qualify. That's not against our curb, the city curb. That's against the parking lot curb. So any city curb on any city street, you're not allowed to perpendicular or angular parking. It's, it has to be parallel and in the flow of the direction of traffic.
Okay, so, so what we're saying is that we, we kind of, sort of have to do this because state law says that we?
Well, the state law, the state law says that's what they allow. The city can change it to do what they want, if they want to. But because of the circumstance that brings this before you, we want to make sure that we clearly state. State law says no. The city now says no, it's not permitted. Plain and simple.
Okay, so I did a little bit of research on this, and the state law does not say no.
It actually does say no unless you pass an ordinance saying yes.
So, so what the state law is saying is, is, is you, you can't say yes, so it's not saying no?
Correct.
But it's saying unless you say yes, unless you pass, unless you take an affirmative action, then it's no.
Yes. Correct.
But, so, I, I don't read that as prohibited. It's, yet I see that as the state giving, um, local authority, um, the authority to do whatever they want to do. And it may be the best thing to do.
But.
Well, it's not prohibitive, but it, if we don't have anything or any language in our ordinances that say you, you can, it defaults to you can't.
Yes, and it actually does say, so that in 41-6A-1402, it says, "Except as otherwise provided in this section, a vehicle stopped or parked on a two-way roadway shall be stopped or parked with the right-hand wheels parallel to and within 12 inches or as close as practicable to the right edge of the right-hand shoulder." That shall means that you don't get to do anything else unless it's allowed further on down in the, in the, the ordinance, or in the code. And further on down, it says, "Local highway authorities may, by ordinance, permit angle parking on any roadway." So, we can do it, but if you don't, if the city doesn't do it, then it is prohibited because of the shall.
I, I get that, but, but the, the state is not telling us we have to. The state is clearly saying.
No, and, and.
We have to, so if we're doing this, if, if we're doing it to stop a, an argument between a couple of neighbors, that's great, let's do that. But let's not do it because we're saying that it, the state requires us to, because the state doesn't require us to.
I'm not sure that's what we're saying, Commissioner Gull. I'm saying that the state says that, that if we want to allow that, we're permitted to allow that.
Right.
And so, and so we're not saying that, the, the state has restriction because the city doesn't supersede the state requirements. The city can go in and create their own ordinance, which would supersede the state. But we can't go say, well, the state doesn't know what they're talking about, right? We're going to, no, we get to control that in our own cities. And so, we're just saying that, okay, it's not permitted by state law, and if we don't have an ordinance that says otherwise, then it still defaults to the state standard, saying it's not permitted. The only reason I have it in front of you is because we, we, we have a belief in our communities, in our, in our, our, in the world, that says if it doesn't say I can't, that must mean I can.
Right.
And the reason it's here is because I want to make it clear that you can't. So, the state law doesn't say we have to put it in there and say that. We're saying as a city, and, and me as an enforcement for the city, saying, I want to make it crystal clear. 100%, you can not. We don't want you to block our garbage collection. We don't want you to block the access for fire apparatus. We don't want you to behave in this manner, which could, could cause, you know, hardships on a neighbor or risk of life. That's the reason why we want to put it in there in black and white, so there's not that misinterpretation. Because we know it happens all the time, and that's why we're wanting to put this in there. This is crystal clear, 100%. The state says you can't do it, now the city says you can't, but.
Thank you, that's an awesome explanation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. I do, I am a little confused, because, and it is regarding MDAs, because I've heard in the past that it, in an MDA, if it doesn't say you can't, that means you can't, versus what we're saying about state law. As it goes to this, you know, different state laws.
I mean, you're kind of talking about two different principles here.
Okay, well, I know. I'm just trying to get clarity. I mean, are they two totally different things?
Well, with this particular item, the state law says, you know, it uses shall. You shall parallel park, and doesn't give any in, it says except for if, if it's provided elsewhere. Um, so that's not really the same as saying, you know, if it's not listed, then you can. With an MDA, um, I mean, do you have an example of what you're thinking about with the MDA?
Yeah, it goes back a couple of years at least, and you know which one I'm talking about. So no, I can't recall off the top of my head, but I've heard you say, you in particular say, "If it doesn't say you can't, then you can." And.
But there's.
It's in one of those previous amendments, so I don't know. It's not important. I was just trying to understand the, the difference, that's all.
Well, and there's, there's other times when, say, um, like in, with the zoning, like with permitted uses and not, and permitted uses, conditional, and if it's not listed, then it's not allowed, but it's specifically stated that way. Then if it's not listed in our list of things, but it also has a provision saying, if it's not listed, then the city manager or their designee has a certain amount of discretion to say whether it fit, it may fit into one of those, you know, a category.
I just love the law.
Well, I know. In other words, it depends.
It depends. Legalese, I like that.
Um, I ha, I do have a question. That made me think that, so if, if we default to state law, um, as a code enforcement officer, can you enforce that? Are you only enforcing city code, or what is, what is the?
State law, I mean, obviously, all these things have to be enforced by Weaver County Sheriff's Department. I am a, I am a process for them to, to take a penalty action on anybody who violates our parking. I'm going to say that, that state law, yes, I can. Because state law right now restricts how far, how close you can park to a stop sign or a stoplight. Those are all the state standards. Now, can I go and enforce those in our community? Absolutely. They're state standards. Um, does it mean we need to adopt it in our ordinance? We can just default back to the state standard. But we're talking about the simplistic thing of striping a sidewalk and putting up a sign versus, you know, someone who perpetually wants to violate because they think they have the right to park anywhere they want. And so, like a state, state law, then they're going to say, well, the city doesn't say I can't. Well, the state law says you can. Well, no, that applies to the state law, the state roads. Okay, so let's put it in there, so you know it applies to every road in West Haven City. State road, county road, city road. So, it, it's just a clarification.
Alright, I was just curious. I didn't know if there was something that kept you from enforcing that, perhaps. I just wanted to make sure.
An interpretation is the reason why we're bringing it to you, is an interpretation.
I get it.
Do you ever foresee a point in time where the city may go back to doing parallel park, or perpendicular parking, like they used to have in front of our Kenneth Baldwin Park before they changed it?
The way that our communities are being developed, it just doesn't make any sense at all.
Okay.
I mean, it just, we, we, there's, and especially some of our streets and our new subdivisions and the road widths. It, it doesn't make any sense. You just can't, you can barely sometimes in somewhere, our roads where they're parked on both sides, get two cars to pass each other by those two. So, it, it, it mean it just make any sense. If the state of Utah says no, then I don't know why we'd even consider it, considering the way that we're developing our, our subdivisions. And, and some of those are being dictated as, by us, not necessarily by the city, but by state code.
Okay, great. It's good work, Dan. Thank you.
Any more questions on this?
Hey, Dan, I think you touched briefly on, on one very important aspect of that, and that is that,
Hey, George.
in a cul-de-sac especially, which brought this situation to the fore, parking parallel to the roadside is in, is actually consistent with the radius that's been established for emergency vehicle ingress and egress. So, you know, to go back and change that and say, okay, now we're going to allow you to park perpendicular, especially in a cul-de-sac, you're going to have to go back and change the radius established for those emergency vehicles, because it's all based on parallel parking rather than perpendicular parking.
You're absolutely right, George. You're absolutely right. And especially when it comes to garbage collection. If people have the expectation to be able to put their garbage can on the curb, and then their neighbor pulls up, you know, during the middle of the night, parks his car, and the garbage collection said, uh-uh, I'm not pulling down there to get that. I'm not going to get in my truck and pull that can, so I can. It just gets missed. And so, um, just to keep the continuity of the community, and to keep the flow and keep our services going, it just doesn't make any sense to even consider something like that, that could prohibit services, and especially emergency services. So, um, with that, I would assume we make a recommendation to forward to the city council approval of the proposed changes to chapter seven parking regulations outlined.
Hey, thanks, Dan. So, any other questions or discussion?
No.
And I'm ready for a motion, if someone would like to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that, uh, we recommend forwarding, uh, recommend approval to the city council regarding proposed amendments to chapter 71 parking regulations as outlined with the changes of adding watercraft.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We got a George, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. It's off to city council. Alright, next on the agenda, discussion of the home occupation ordinance, and I see it's in our packet. Amy, do you want to give it, you have a background of what we need to, what's maybe come up that needs to be changed or addressed?
Well, I don't think it needs to be changed, but this is up to, but I'm not the one who gets to make the, uh, recommendation. This is up to you guys. Um, so if you remember back, um, about four, five years ago, um, we had issues regarding, um, home occupation, um, with auto repair. There was different auto repair, um, people had applied for different types of auto repair, and we had a number of problems with that auto repair. There was problems with parking, there was problems with hours of operation, there was part, problems with possible environmental issues, noise, that sort of thing. Um, and if you remember, and Andrew was on this committee, um, weren't you leading the committee in 2022 when we looked at that amend, at amend, making amendments to the home occupation?
It depends on whether you'd like the ordinance or not. Yeah, it was, I, I led that initial push, and then we revised it some more, I think, like a year later. But just to clarify a few more things, but yeah.
But yeah, and one of the things was, very specifically was, how do we deal with these, um, these auto repair, um, businesses? Because some people on the committee, and even some people on the planning commission, knew of a number of these businesses, home occupation businesses, that were doing just great, and that were following rules. And, but then there was also these, um, other ones that we'd had a couple of bad experiences with that did not follow the rules, or we'd set rules, and then they managed to circumvent the rules in a way that we were having a hard time being able to control, you know, the nuisances that they were causing. Um, one of the things that was added states, stated the following. "The following use shall not constitute home occupations and shall not be allowed in any residential or agricultural zone. On lots less than one acre, any business which involves the repair, service, inspection, or any type of work on any type of vehicle, motorcycle, automobile, or off-" motorcycle, automobile, or off-highway vehicle," and it gives the definition of, in the Utah state code. Um, currently, an acre is defined in West Haven as forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty, um, square foot lot. There is, um, a resident, Mike Anderson, he came to the city council on August twenty-first of this year and spoke during the public comment period, and he was, he would like to do a home occupation with vehicle and trailer inspection. However, his lot is only point nine six acres, which is forty-one thousand eight hundred and seventeen point sixty square feet. And he knows, and he stated this on the public record, that he knows that there is a requirement that it be a full acre. And he requested that the city look at amending the home occupation ordinance to change the requirement of the full acre so that he can apply for this home occupation. And so, we are here, um, regarding whether or not you want to look at, um, amending this particular section of the code so that he can apply. Yeah, so that's where we're at. I mean, I think, like I said, you already know my feelings about it because we've had problems. And the problems always occur on, well, not always, but they've occurred on pieces of property that are less than that one acre. Um, and there was a lot of discussion back in twenty twenty-two regarding how big, how big of a piece of property could you have so that you may be able to mitigate those problems? But again, this is totally up to you guys as to how you want to define it.
I'm gonna just go ahead and say I'm okay with it as it stands. I, I don't see any reason to, to revisit that.
Same for me.
I was just gonna say thanks for the, the work group who looked at this just, you know, two short years ago. And, uh, if they had a, a full work group looking at it, uh, just that short a period of time ago, I, I don't think we um, should be questioning the work that that group did.
I mean, I sympathize with this resident because it seems like semantics over, you know, a few square feet, like, and a lot of these subdivisions, they're acre subdivisions, but they're all just that much under an acre. So I think they can, or feel like they're on an acre. It looks like an acre. It may not look any different than someone's acre. Some, some of the acres are, that are a full acre, they're wide and, or they're narrow and go back deep, or they're wider. So, I don't know. I'm kind of on the fence. I, I sympathize, you know, over a few feet like that, like,
I do too.
you know, if it's a worthwhile business venture and his neighbor is on an acre and, you know, sometimes the way subdivisions are laid out, there's some lots that are a little over an acre, some are, you know, so. You know, I, I'm probably in the minority because I, if, you know, I would be in favor of looking at it, considering it. But I don't know of everybody else. Sounds like everybody else is so far. I don't know. How about you, Andrew? Or you were kind of on the committee?
Yeah, it is kind of hard because it's like, well, if you rounded that up, it'd be an acre, but. It's, uh, unless we wanna say, hey, but this seems like it would be a very specific accommodation for a very specific person if you said, you know, if you can, plus or, plus or minus, plus or minus five tenths of an acre, right?
But I still now remember a forty thousand square feet thing, like a twenty thousand was considered a half acre and forty was like a acre.
And then we redefine the acre in every ordinance, yeah, to make it congruent across.
And that's when it, you know, changed from forty thousand, like what you remember. You, you remember correctly. Yeah, but like Andrew said, we changed, that got changed by the city council about around the time I think that this actually got, I think it was about two years ago or so.
Okay. I mean, I, I sympathize with him also, but there's always gonna be that number, right? There's always gonna be, whatever the cutoff is, someone's gonna be close. Um, it's unfortunate, but the, the number was decided upon for a reason. And, and like in, like in thinking of the community as a whole, and, and I feel bad for, for him because this sounds like something that they really wanna do, or that it might, you know, they're close enough to make it work. But at the same time, as a community as a whole, this is something that we, we found to be a problem in the community. And so I'm, I'm, I'm okay just leaving it as is. Do we wanna just kind of do a poll? How about you, George, online?
I, I'm good with leaving it at, at an acre, and, and I think that's, uh, that, that's the right thing to do, frankly, and I think we should hold fast to that. And I don't think it should be a plus or a minus, a tenth or a quarter, or a sixteenth, or, or whatever it is. I think we need to, you know, be very clear about that and, and hold fast to, to what we've defined as an acre. And, uh, so, so that's my position on that. Um, but I will tell you that I went back and because I am new at this and haven't looked at this ordinance and didn't know the history of it, I, I did look through the entire ordinance and have a few more comments on that if anybody wants to hear them.
I would be interested, George.
Yep.
It'd refresh my memory, because I do remember a big discussion about this.
Okay, so, so the first thing is, um, in the ordinance under four A, or A four, rather, the, the ordinance uses the term hazardous chemicals as defined in UCA nineteen dash six dash three oh two, three oh two, excuse me. When I looked at that ordinance, or that law, UCA nineteen six three oh two, it uses the terms hazardous materials and hazardous substances. And, and I wonder if we ought to give that a second look, if we're gonna reference the state law so that we don't use terms that are not used in that state law. If it uses hazardous substances and materials, we probably should use those terms because those aren't necessarily interchangeable terms. So, so that's one thing I think, you know, if we could go back and, and take a look at, um, might be useful. And then the other thing is I was looking through this, um, in five, it says, "A home occupation license shall be issued, except as noted in one fifty-seven eight eighty-one C below." And, you know, you have to meet those five things. And, uh, they're very clearly spelled out, but if you're gonna get a conditional use permit, then you, eh, because you're not meeting any one of those five things, and you go back and you look at the conditional use permit, it, it talks about additional, uh, considerations. Will the business produce or like, be likely to produce noise, odors, dust, or smoke that extends beyond the property? Uh, will the business produce or be likely to produce vehicular traffic such that it becomes a nuisance or hazard? And, and I think this kind of parallels the can and can't, uh, discussion we just had. Um, and it just seemed to me like those things also should be considerations uh, to all home occupation, uh, uses rather than just those that require a conditional use permit. So I just put that out there for thoughts and consideration.
All right. Amy, what do you think? Would we wanna bring that back and kind of?
Um, I, I think that, um, George has a really good point about the, you know, making sure that our definitions are, are, um, you know, line up with the state code if we're citing the, the section. Um, I need to just look into that section of the code. Um, however, when it comes to the other point about those, um, the list of things, you know, if there's a conditional use, um, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. If it's permitted, then it's permitted, and it's, and it's okay. And, um, which we've gone through and, and said, all right, what, what's going to be permitted? Um, it's the ones that, there are other issues involved that I think that, that's when the conditions are, are, um, pertinent.
Yeah, the reason I say that, because if you meet all those five conditions in A, then you could produce noise, odors, dust, or smoke that extends beyond the property, and that would be acceptable. However, if you don't meet some of those, and, and for instance, um, you have two employees that don't live at the residence. If you have two employees that don't live at the residence, then you get a conditional use permit, then it's okay if you produce noise, smoke, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I, I, I just think, I, I just think that all home occupations, whether it's permitted uh, by ordinance, or whether it requires a conditional use permit, um, should have those same kind of compliance issues with regard to, you know, things that are gonna be nuisances to neighboring properties.
Well, but in, um, A, with those five, one of the, the, um, one of the conditions for it to be permitted is that it does not otherwise violate any provision of the West Haven City zoning code. So if there is, you know, noise issues, or if there is, um, some type of, of a nuisance produced by their business, then that would mean that they, um, aren't a permitted use and would fall into the conditional use permit. So, we, we are dealing with that already, um, with those five, and if they don't meet one of those five, then it does fall into that, that condition.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
And I'm just saying that we already have it in there.
Yeah, and so then I would say we either, my, my position is, we either need it in both places, or we don't need it in either place because it's covered in other ordinances within the city.
But it needs to be outlined. I understand what you're, you are, um, suggesting, but it's, um, the way that it is outlined in A, um, I'm, I'm trying to, to articulate what's. The way that it's outlined in A does list out, hey, the business can't otherwise violate any provision of the, the city zoning code. Um, and it's allowed. But it's also, you know, you're not going to have some of those things that are gonna produce noise, odors, dust, or smoke, because it's not using, you know, a permitted use doesn't use any accessory building, garage, yard, or space outside the main building, not normally associated with residential use. So, i- it's already put in those, you know, these, this list as to how we determine what's a permitted use.
Yeah, and, and so I think, I think we're in agreement, because if, if we're gonna say you can do that, have that home occupation business, and it's either permitted, in which case you, you would have, let's use the two employee versus one employee since that is the easiest one, that, that you only have one employee and you have to comply with the city's ordinances, you know, that's implicit there, right? And, and then if you go to the conditional use permit and say, okay, I'm gonna have two employees, so I want a conditional use permit, and then we're gonna put these other considerations at the time of issuing that conditional use permit, we're gonna ask those other questions of that before we issue that conditional use permit. And all I'm suggesting is, if we're gonna ask those questions, even though I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, it's ordinance compliant issue, if we're gonna ask those questions and consider those items in order to issue a conditional use permit, should we not also be asking those same questions? And, and, uh, when we consider whether or not that's a, a permitted use? That's all I'm saying.
And, and I guess my point is that, um, the five things that are listed, um, if they comply with all those, we've really already implicitly asked the questions that, that the conditional use does because they're not likely to produce noise or odors if you only have, you know, if you're operating inside the residence itself. Um, because you're looking at, you know, maybe an accounting office, you know, where I know that, um, like our, um, former city attorney, um, had his law office in his, um, house. You know, so you're already looking at, you know, not having any more than one employee, so you're not dealing with the vehicular traffic. You're not dealing with, you know, you're not producing business, um, that has no noise or odors, dust, or smoke. Um, you're not producing hazardous chemicals. Um, so the, those five things already pretty much ask, i- if you comply with those five things, you're already saying no to the stuff underneath anyway.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not really seeing that, because I, I know there's, um, a home occupation that's down the street from where I live, and it, it's not, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's just the definition of home occupation that I'm not getting. You know, maybe that's where I'm having this, this disconnect between the conditional use permit and the permitted uses. Um, so do we have a, a place where I can go look specifically what is a home occupation and how that's defined? I couldn't find it anywhere, but again, it may be my, my, uh, my ineptitude with that.
If you're looking at, I mean, I included all of the home occupation ordinance so that, because it, like with the required conditions, um, that's part of it. Um, really, the, and also the purpose and the intent is, um, to allow people residing in dwellings in residential and agricultural areas to provide a service or develop a product for sale, um, or operate certain kinds of small businesses while at the same time maintaining the peace, quiet, and domestic tranquility within all residential or agricultural areas of the city. So, I mean, you're looking at, you know, home offices, you're looking at, um, sometimes there's been, people have asked for, um, like internet businesses that they can conduct out of their houses that is more of a, you know, they're not meeting with people, they're not. But then like care salons that somebody has in their basement. Um, you know, when you're looking at maybe one client at a piece that you're not increasing the traffic. Um, but I think that one of the reasons why they formed the committee was to state, these are not going to, you know, undersea, these are not what's going to be considered a home occupation.
Okay, so, so right down the street from, and I know it's been a problem for the neighbors, there's a guy, and he's probably half a mile from my house, he repairs, um, industrial equipment, man lifts, scissors lifts, forklifts, um, uh, cherry pickers, those types of things. And is that considered a home occupation business?
Um, without having the address, I can't, I, I'm not able to, to say one way or the other. We'd have to have the address and look up the, uh, business license.
Because sometimes commercial will kind of creep into a agricultural zone or a.
And there's probably a lot of things that kind of are under the radar, not reported, but maybe operating until somebody.
Or there's been stuff that has been allowed, and then we've changed the code, and so we, it's grandfathered in.
Yeah, I don't, I, I admittedly, I don't know the particulars on that. All I know is the city, uh, he went to the city and got a permit, whether it's whatever type of permit he's got, I don't know the particulars again. And then he was creating noise issues for his neighbors, running, uh, impact guns to repair equipment outside, and they were supposed to be repaired inside, and, you know, th- those kinds of things. So, so, and it was a long-running issue, and I'm not, I'm not certain how it ever got resolved or if it did. But, um, so, so that's where I'm saying if, if those things apply, then, and, and certainly they do by ordinance, um, you know, it seems they would fit both categories, so. Anyway, that's just my thoughts on that.
So with everything else, I mean, it kind of sounds like, because you can't vote on this, we're just discussing, um, that everybody's feelings are that, uh, or the majority, at least. Well, not the majority, but a number of you are thinking that, um, just to leave it the way it is when it comes to that, um, acre. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, so we just will leave it as is.
And I have my.
Cool with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, thanks for your discussion. Thanks for your input, everyone. And with that, um, item put to rest, we'll move on to agenda item number six.
I'll move to adjourn. I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Didn't think there would be, but had to ask. All right, well, we are officially adjourned. Thank you, and thank George for attending online. We appreciate your input.